Uh, we are gonna go ahead and get back into our work meeting. I believe we're on item two point four, flag lot follow-up discussion. Michael, are you ready?
I am.
It's gonna be fun.
Thank you. So, um, just so you'll know, we do have this on a draft planning commission agenda for next week for discussion only. If the council is supportive of that. And then, of course, the next step would be to schedule a public hearing with the planning commission. Alright, so you had requested that we bring back a few just case samples of flag lots and some illustrating some of the issues that we see in the community. So this is, this is a subdivision that was approved by the county in nineteen ninety seven. It was called the Old Wyler subdivision. And this property, you can see just a classic flag lot, this property actually became part of this subdivision proposed by Joe Darger. That was recently reviewed by the planning commission called Eldora Ridge subdivision. Now originally when this project came in, so the, the original flag lot was on the north side of this, of this property, the upper half of this subdivision. Um, but you can see this layout included two flag lots. So we currently have an ordinance that says, um, you can see quoted below. A flag lot shall not be created as part of a subdivision where there are more than two lots in the subdivision. So we informed the applicant that this did not meet our standards and that a flag lot could not be part of this. What, what was here, an eighteen lot subdivision, two lots being flag lots. Now, he revised that proposal. This is what was shown to the planning commission. Sixteen lots were approved by the planning commission. Now, this property has ten acres and the density in this eight point two five zone was eight, one point six. So he was not even able to achieve the minimum or the, or the density kind of threshold of one point eight that we typically see development happen in the eight point two five zone. Again, we removed the two flag lots. So this is a case where if we were to change that one standard, we might see another example of a subdivision that has more than two lots in it that might have one or two or who knows how many flag lots. It depends on how many we would, we would allow. Wanna discuss that or would you like me to go through all of the scenarios and then kind of come back to the discussion?
Okay.
Go through them all.
Alright, so, so that's one issue. This is another, uh, project that is familiar with the planning commission and city council. You may recall that this property, which is a hundred and thirty ninth south, uh, just north of Butterfield Park. We considered a rezone request last year. This is currently zoned A one and the request was for eight point five. It's five acres. Um, on the left-hand side of the screen to the, to the, to the, uh, south, there's a ravine, so there's quite a bit of grading back here on this property. Uh, again, it fronts on a hundred and thirty ninth south. They were originally asking for that rezone and hoping to do six lots. The council said no on the rezone request. So now we still have the A one zone in place and they're trying to figure out how to get four lots on this property. Now, what they could potentially do is essentially do two separate subdivisions, each with one flag lot. And what that would generate is essentially four intersections or four driveways or four access points on a hundred and thirty ninth south. However, if we changed our standards and allow, um, basically flag lots to share a common driveway or easement or access. We could potentially have all four of these lots share one access point. So you can see here is another issue, you know, that seems to be contrary to what we generally would like to see happen. If we can consolidate points of access. That tends to be better for traffic, for traffic flow. Um, again, the, the way, the workaround to this, and it's a little clever, again, would be to do two separate subdivision eats with their own flag lot. Uh, another issue is this question of we currently don't allow flag lots on collector streets. We do classify our collectors with both major and minor. So major are the red, uh, streets, uh, blue are the minor. And, um, we do see, uh, individuals who have a desire to do flag lots on these minor collectors, but currently the ordinance says just no flag lots on any collectors. So that is a barrier to potential flag lot development in the city. Um, and then another issue is there's really no discretion. There's no, nothing in the ordinance that allows the planning commission to kind of modify these standards. And here's just one example. The ordinance currently requires a six-foot solid fence around all sides, including the, the flat or the mast portion or the access portion of the flag lot. So let's say, for example, a neighboring property owner already has, in this case, I just have a photograph of a wall that we typically see in our community. A precast wall or some type of masonry wall. Let's say the neighbor already has this, this type of wall. Flag lot comes into the city. The requirement is you have to have a vinyl fence, but we also have an ordinance that says you can't have double fencing. So now this flag lot developer has to go and convince the neighbor who's built this masonry wall to remove that wall and allow them to put up a vinyl fence.
That sounds stupid.
Not gonna happen, right? So there's no, there's no provision. There's no opportunity for the planning commission to apply maybe a common sense rule. I mean, obviously the intent here was the flag lot has introduces, um, a, a, a level of i- i- it changes the, the feeling of privacy. There, there's now going to be a home in a place where historically there hasn't been a home. Where people thought would never be a home potentially, right? So we're interested, introducing a, a, a new flag lot and the idea is, well, we wanna make sure we at least mitigate any potential privacy concerns or impacts by at least having this required six-foot solid vinyl fence. But you can see that it doesn't always make sense to apply that, you know, equally without, without variation. Um, so I included in your packet a number of just of potential amendments that we could consider. Again, uh, to be honest, I don't know where our planning commission is at on this issue. We've talked about it a little bit. Um, and I don't really feel there's consensus as I think there is on this council. There's not consensus on this issue. But if we at least take the next step, we can go through the public hearing process and bring it back to the council so you can finally have your, your final discussion and make a decision. Do we want to modify some of our standards and make flag lots a little more, um, available as a development tool in our city? Especially as we're doing more and more smaller lot development. Uh, um, or is this again intentional that we really want to encourage developers to acquire more properties and consolidate them? And we have more traditional forms of development in our city? Um, you know, our, our community could go either way. It really is, this is an expression of your values and what do you wanna see happen in this community?
Oh, add to that, we, we, I obviously another call from our president on seventy three hundred that has a acre, acre lot there. They are zoned eight point five, so.
Which one?
I made a mistake when I told you it's eight point five.
Oh, eight point.
Sorry about that.
Which one are we talking about?
Uh, it's just on seventy three hundred. But, um, they're, they're concerned also because they had anticipated with their building that they'd be able to divide and put another piece on there, but and, and I, I'll just go back to where I, I believe this should be controlled zoning. And then I think we should clean up just like the one we decided as a, as a body that we did not want that to rezone from A one to an A five, remember? Eight point five, because we felt like that needed to be.
This one, yeah.
This is what we're talking about.
Yeah, and they needed to retain that. So what they've done is come back to the drawing board and said, okay, these people are exiting their home. They're, they're making that transition in their life. How can they produce value out of their life asset? And, but still keep in harmony with what the idea was for the neighborhood. And they, they've done that, but I don't think we want them to piece it out like this. I think that if we have ordinance that's saying, oh, we need you to have fifteen different driveways. We need to think about what makes more sense, what makes common sense and it makes those adjustments.
Sure.
That it's doable, it's still in harmony with, with what we asked for the zoning. And again, I go back to, I agree with the premise of it was not to chop up all of our one acre lots in the city. But that's all controlled by zoning. They don't have to be rezoned. It doesn't have to be controlled by a flag lot ordinance. It's controlled in zoning.
Do I have a question?
Sure.
Specifically regards to this one. Is this the only way for them to, to make that happen or is there other ways to make that happen for, uh, for instance? Can't they just make that a pri- a, a full road and like other subdivisions would do and just address them off of that road instead of a private lane?
So you may recall that we had actually a previous design that included a cul-de-sac. Um, but the community was coming out and saying that they were trying to preserve agricultural values. They did not wanna see
They wanted that soft shoulder on the south side of that road.
Traditional, yeah, they did wanna see traditional, um, kind of public purpose.
Well, they were trying to squeeze in an extra lot, which made the, which made the front one smaller than the half.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it became really difficult to fit.
Large area.
And meet the one acre. They could have if it was a half acre.
So.
We could have done a half acre with a zoning condition of like four lots or something like that.
Cause that's.
But it, but we have one acre minimum still.
But to your point, I, I think there's an aspect of whether or not it's a residential zone versus an agricultural zone. I mean, a dirt road, a dirt drive in an agricultural zone seems appropriate. That doesn't seem like we're defeating any city planning issues or creating problems by keeping a, a dirt lane to an agricultural property. And so if the intent is we wanna subdivide it and have it residential properties, that's a different zone, right?
Right.
I think that's what you were bringing up earlier, so.
So I'm, I'm being told that fire would not allow, uh, for that to be a dirt road. It'd have to be paved.
If they're gonna subdivide it, they have to.
What about the new house, honey?
Yeah, that's interesting. Then how come, how come we're, we can have to allow people to build on, on dirt, dirt roads? And fire connects us on dirt roads? I, I, I'm not arguing with that. I'm just confused right now.
It's a requirement. It's that or they put, have to put fire sprinklers in.
But, so, uh, going back.
Some of these like this one, they, that was built before.
These were prior to that requirement.
In the county.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious.
Have to move house right out.
So, so for me, there's two different things that I'm looking at here. One is the specific property and two is the larger issue, right? Is, is, is the overall what we wanna do with this. And this specific property, I don't see. It, it, it doesn't seem to me to be on the city to allow them to do extra subdivisions just so they could do extra, um. Cause we would have, so right now it's one property, right?
One parcel.
So we would have to allow them to come in and split it into two subdivisions, correct?
So they could again submit two different applications.
But we don't have to prove it.
Um, it would meet standards.
But it's. They meet standards. You can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking is, cause I'm trying to understand, like, that's a, that's.
Yeah. Right, so this potential is a possible outcome.
But would we allow, even, even if it was two s- two separate ones, would we still allow the flag lot? I mean, I know that one of the requirements is that it has to be no more than two lots.
That's why they would do two different subdivisions, yeah.
That's why. I, I, I know, but are there any other requirements in the current ordinance that would prevent them from doing it even if it was only two? Cause is that?
No, it's, it's an option that's allowed as long as they meet the standards.
And that's part of, that's part of me understanding what, what we would need to do to adjust that. I think that, uh, my preference would be let's put something in the code that prevents that. But that, that to me is, is trying to get around the rules and that bothers me, but I get that they have that option, but I'm not, to me, the solution to me is put in a road and address them off the road.
You may recall that when I looked at some of the other cities right here. Um, there are other cities around us that allow more than one unit to access a single, you know, driveway, priv- private lane, right? So we're, we're the only one who right now says only one. Right, Harriman.
Only one?
Well, okay, West Jordan says, oh, sorry, dwelling limit one. Um, STEM may not accept three hundred thirty, I apologize. West Jordan says one as well. So we say one. Left Dale has no limit. Reverton not specified and South Jordan does two. However, nobody else seems to have that, that restriction of saying, if you do, let's say, a ten lot subdivision, you can't have a flag lot. And no, nobody else has that.
May I propose, if, and, and if the Capitol is, is a medium, to this, to keep this to the planning commission through the public hearing process and see what some feedback is. What some of the suggestions they might make to say, how do we solve some of these issues? You know, if it's, if we need to adjust this ordinance so that these problems are, what, what does that look like? Just so that we, so we can get some feedback from them and then deliberate further once their feedback comes. Are you guys amenable to that?
I would like the input from both planning commissioners themselves and the public through that public hearing process for us to deliberate, yeah.
And the public, yeah. Are you guys good with that? I mean, I think that, that this conversation's been good, but I think that it'll be even more valuable time spent if we just have
Without additional input.
With the addition of.
I'm great. Great. Somebody else.
Yeah, and, and again, I have no idea what will come out of that.
And, 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 and neither do we, but I think there's the process that we go through, so let's just go through it.
Process.
As I personally have still, at the same point it was the last time, brought this up, which is, alright, well, this was put in for a reason. What are the, what are the problems with flag lots on those roads that we're trying to prevent?
Exactly.
What are those things?
That would be what we wanna prevent.
When we just saw.
Exactly, what were those problems? Well, cause we're saying we don't want flag lots on those collector roads.
Minor, minor collectors.
Right, so is that a, is that one of those collector roads?
Or major collectors.
Can we go to, can we go to that street? I wanna talk about that. The collectors.
What are the problems that we're trying to avoid and is this taking care of that or is there a better way to do that? Cause we're, like with any, anything we try to put in place with
Can you show us where that was on the map?
The hodgepodge that we have of places like this that were built in the county under different rules and now they're in here.
The, the one we were just looking at.
Like, we're never gonna have a one-size-fits-all, right, that works everywhere.
Right.
Yeah, it's right on the other side of that canyon right behind the park, yeah.
No, I agree. I just think, but I think that, that, that's important to really identify, re-identify that. Cause, cause when I listened to the process, two years ago, it was, the whole intent behind this was to stop people from coming in and chopping their one acre lawn.
So it's behind a gate.
And it's like, but to me that just gets controlled by the authority.
Yeah, to me that wasn't an issue. I mean, when, I mean, I forget when it was or when I on, when I started coming to these meetings.
Yeah.
It was, we don't want them on those streets because it caused traffic problems, right?
Right.
And then it's ma- a maintenance problem. Who's taking care of that, that access point and the, right? And, and it might be family members who are doing it now, but then they sell off and then that next property owner is really upset with that person because they're not taking care of their huge flag lot next to them. And the fencing issue, like all those things were put in because there were problems.
They were.
That came up, right? It's those things. It's not a matter of, of zoning and dividing lots. It was the functionality of the actual flag lot itself.
But it's still something that i- in some ways it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, the, the red line, the red roads, yeah, I kinda get that, right? Um, there's, there's probably a, the, whatever.
Yeah.
What are the, the old Harriman road, you know, over by your house, right? That, that's maybe a little bit different. But like, I mean, these blue roads, like Emmeline Drive, I mean, there's what? Three hundred driveways to pull out on there?
And we specifically changed.
Why would there be a problem with one more driveway?
And, and we specifically changed the ordinance because of Emmeline Drive.
Yeah.
We changed it to where the developers have to build into the community and cannot put drives on the minor collectors anymore because of them.
Cause they.
Cause of that, right.
Cause it was a disaster and it has.
Dangerous. So that's what I'm saying is like, tell me what the problems are that we're trying to avoid and does this do that or is there a better way to do that?
Exactly.
Can we write it differently that says if one of these problems exists, then you can't do it. Otherwise, go ahead.
No, I agree. I just think, I just think that there's, I think it, it's a situation even as we grow. Eight years ago, maybe it wasn't, it'd be the same. But now it's like, okay, now there's info. Now that all these things have developed, now it's created additional problems. We need to re-look at it and, and address the additional problems that's created. And fix it and move on.
Jared, something I've heard tonight, and I don't know why I've been so slow maybe understanding this. If we were to propose, um, the ability to have a flag lot on a minor collector, maybe it's not a blank slate though. Maybe there are still other standards we could write.
Yeah.
That would say in these conditions, it doesn't work, right?
Perfect.
But in these other locations, if you have this kind of context, maybe it is okay. Maybe it does make sense.
Yeah, I like that.
So.
Okay, cause by saying there's just, you can't do a flag lot on these roads is the one-size-fits-all for this problem.
Yeah.
Right? But is that problem exist in every one of those? Probably not. Well, so what's the problem? If that problem exists, then you can't do it.
I will say, I think the biggest issue we have been facing where we usually say no when somebody's asking us, it's usually because it's on a collector street. So that's the big thing that usually stops people from moving forward.
And I, I, Jared, you've made some great points and I appreciate it because it's turned me just a little bit on this entire thing of what is the problem and what are we trying to solve?
Well, I've only said it every meeting, however many long we're talking about.
Yeah, but, but, but that's fair. I think in regards to specifically, um, minor collectors. That, where I'm standing right now is, is pretty, so I'd have to, you'd have to really convince me that it's a good idea to put it on a minor collector. Because I look at it and I say, some of the things that I, here's what I foresee. I foresee that, that we put in conditions that would allow something that would work great now, but then next year, somebody's gonna develop the property right next to it. And we wouldn't have allowed it had that property been developed already. And so then we've created, we've created a situation where now we have the problem that we were trying to solve. And so for me, the minor collector is one that I would need some real convincing on. I'm open to listen if there's a way to solve that. But I, that, I, I struggle to see how we would do that, but that's just where I sit on that one.
If, if nothing else, I feel some love for this idea right here. You see that this is kind of a problem.
Oh, yeah. That's stupid.
Yeah, that's terrible.
Oh, gosh.
That's absolutely stupid.
So maybe we could at least fix that if nothing else.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I think I agree. Let's, let's bring back what the problems, why those decisions were made.
Let the planning commission figure out what the problems are.
Yeah.
It's gonna be tough for them too. They're, like I said, they have both sites.
Yeah, there's some pushing and blocking there.
But I, I think.
That's healthy.
I think I'd like to hear some of their reasoning behind some of like, why do you need a six-foot fence around every flag lot? That doesn't make sense. Somebody, somewhere thought it was a good idea, but why?
Well, I think the main, I mean, so if I, if I owned the lot in front of it and now the length of my yard is now a driveway for somebody behind me.
Somebody's driving through my.
Like, I want a separation there so my kids don't get around.
Yeah, I didn't cause the impact. I want somebody else to pay for.
But I can, I can understand, right? It makes sense and stuff.
Yeah, it does, it does, it does.
So that's what I mean, like, what are, what are the issues and is this taking care of the problems or is there a better? Can it just be written opposite way? If these problems exist, then you can't do it.
Yeah.
Do you have clear direction?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. It's very helpful.
Awesome. We will move on to item two point five, discussion pertaining to private encroachments on Harriman City property.
Jeez. Right, you found this one.
You need this.
No, no, I don't. I don't have a presentation on this mostly because this is kind of an introductory discussion just to ease council's appetite.
I mean, it's, we've talked about this so many times.
I'm not in favor of that. Yeah, uh, no.
And, and I guess the reason why we're bringing you back is so that we can get a policy in place. And that's kind of where I'm leading with this discussion is we have talked about it a lot. It would be helpful for staff to bring you a policy if that's your appetite and formalize that.
That, that's my appetite, Clint.
Or codify it.
Do you have any thoughts? Do you wanna start working on policy?
Yes, I'm not in favor of encroachments.
Do you want to start working on policy?
If, if.
I guess so.
Maybe a little con- more context to it.
Come on, I'm just trying to.
It'll be short. So the policy, I think, we, we have some ideas. We've looked at staff, as staff, at some codes, um, some other policies, ways other cities have handled this. And then try to balance that in light of the feedback we've gotten from this council in the past. And really what we're looking at are existing encroachments. How do we deal with those, right? Do we require them to pull up their fences, tear out their trees, you know, move their trams or their sheds? Or yeah, whatever the case may be, do we require them to do that and for any future encroachments, tell them no? Or do we just deal with future encroachments and kind of leave those existing encroachments where they are?
Think we have to do both.
And I think that we have to have a, a, a clear understanding of, of those encroachments to be human, like, I don't know.
Well, and that's, yeah.
And I think, I understand that the line is like, look, the encroach, take it out. But it's that we don't approach any other thing that is, to be, I don't know.
But I, yeah, but I would also say if it's, if it's improved and maintained and landscaped, well, that's not a bad thing for us, right?
Exactly.
It's less work we have to do.
I, but I think, I, I, but yeah, we have to have a policy for it, yeah.
And here, here's the thing, like, here's, I can't tell you how many times, and I had somebody ask me this question since our last council meeting.
Yeah.
There's this empty space behind my lot. The city owns it, but I want to do X, Y, Z with it. Will the city let me do it? And I looked down and said, I literally have had this question, I don't know how many times, and the answer is you can put whatever you want there, but the city owns it. That's a right of way and they can come in at any second and tear it out. So if you wanna beautify it, put in a tree, run a garden hose out there, put some flowers in and stuff. Nobody's gonna stop you from doing that or ticket you or whatever, but when they need to come through and do something, they'll rip it out and no, they're not gonna replace it. Now, the other thing I've had happen a ton is somebody that wants to buy the land. The city owns it, no, nothing's being done there. It's naturally landscaped. Can I buy it? No, this is, we don't sell, the city doesn't sell open space, right? We just don't do that. Well, if I just purposely build my pool there or put my fence where I want it.
That is where I have a real issue.
Then, then they'll sell it to me or then I'll get it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I ha- I have a.
And that's what happens a lot. And with almost every one of these examples that you bring us, it's that.
A lot.
And that we have, we have over fifty that we've identified where that is the case, where either
Yeah.
the current property owner or the previous property owner realign a fence or a rock wall or build a shed or a playhouse. In, in the city's, in the city's property.
Uh, so, sometimes it's a, it's a small difference and it is got trouble for using the, the term innocent mistake, right? It was a mistake, but too often it's on purpose because they know they, they can't get it any other way and all city will say, well, cause they're, whoever did it formed a contract, usually it's a contractor or whoever. Oh, you know, just do it and then they'll, they'll, they'll end up just giving it to you. They're not gonna make you tear it out, sort of thing, right? And I mean, that happens with almost every one of these that you guys bring to us. And that's, that's why, you know, to your point, Steve, generally speaking, I mean, it's nice, if somebody wants to put the expense in, great. But where I have the issue is those that basically just make a decision on their own. It's like, it's the cities, but they're never gonna do anything with it and they're not gonna use it, therefore I am.
So, and, and let me tell you.
A lot of times it's, they've already asked if they can buy it.
Let me give you a specific example.
And then that's their way of forcing it.
So there's a resident in, in my district who has, um, a corner, front corner of their lot. It's like a fifteen-foot triangle piece and it's a, it's a, along a trail. Um, and the trail doesn't go there, but part of the open space around the trail. I- i- instead of having a square lot, it kinda just moves on this one corner of their lot. They've asked for an, an exception to landscape it and put grass and make it look like part of their lot, right? Because right now it's just a bunch of weeds. I, I think that's a value add to the city in some ways, right? It's beautifying, it's improving and stuff. But then there's the assumption on their part that
It's theirs.
now it's my lot, right? Now it's my place. Somebody else coming to buy it when it is.
To me, that's, to me, that's the park strip.
But, but at the same time, that particular.
Park strip's not yours, but yeah, you can landscape it and put two in there.
But you maintain it, right? And it's the same, I, I think it's that same kind of thing where in that sense, maybe it makes sense for somebody else who has the same fifteen feet, but it's on a, into a, a, a drainage zone or something like that, or, or on a trail.
A trail.
Well, then it's a problem, right? So having a policy that kind of clarifies these might be acceptable, that's not acceptable. It's the same thing with flag lots.
And, and.
What's the problem we're trying to stop is people, you know, claiming city property.
And to me, to me, there's a difference between, you know, landscaping that can be easily removed if needed, right? And it, versus a permanent structure.
Or concrete.
So.
Permanent structure.
Yeah.
This whole conversation is, is indicative of why we're bringing it again, right?
Yeah.
Because we're dealing with these people who are telling us it's only fifteen feet. I just wanna put grass. It's not that big of a deal.
Yes.
And while we agree with them, we as staff really don't have the flexibility to say yes to them.
Yeah.
So, so I think if you're okay with this, what we would propose is coming to you with, would, would either be a written policy or even, I might suggest code. That codify these standards that have built into them an exception that you can make as city council. So we as staff are putting a situation where we say, it's not our call. You can't do it, but there is a process for you to go to council and plead your case essentially, right? And you, you can make.
I hate that. I hate that.
And that's.
Exception.
The other option.
Cause everyone thinks they have an exception.
They do.
And then you set precedent and all that.
And, and it is difficult and my position.
I, I, when it comes to landscaping, I like the current answer, which is if you're asking us, no, we can't give you permission, but I'll tell you, no one's gonna come tear it out on purpose cause it's temporary. But if you, but if it's, can I put my fence there? Can I put my pool there? Can I put my concrete there? No, that's permanent structure. We're, that's not your property. We'll tear it out. If you wanna run a water line there and put a tree in, I mean, that's up to you. We're not gonna tell you to, to tear a tree out. But if we need to get some equipment in there next year or something, we'll tear it out. No, we're not gonna pay you to replace it, cause that's.
We're not gonna fix your line either.
Right.
I, 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 I'm in the fairly close agreement with Jared here. I'm, I, I don't have a problem if anybody wants to throw down some grass seed and mow the lawn. Like, no big deal. Uh, what I have problems with is, for example, the, the one that you just cited. They took and they rerouted their front walkway and put for concrete into city property. So it's not just that they are mowing the lawn. They have now made.
They're trying, they're taking possession.
Well, there's, there's, there's two problems, right? One is, one is smaller, one is bigger. And they're kinda trying to combine the two of them.
And so I, 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 I.
But they're both just encroachments.
So that's why I said, I, I like the current, our current. So that's why I said I I like the current, our current.
Policy is, well, if you're asking us permission, no, we have to tell you no, it's city property, in practice, if you plant a tree, we're not gonna come rip it out, cause you planted a tree, but. If you build something, sidewalk, fence, I mean, we had a a swimming pool, right, was built in into city property. It's like, well, yeah, we're gonna make you tear that out because you're trying to take city property, right, throw on some grass seeds and some 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 flower seed out there, or even planting a tree and running a garden hose to it.
And there's almost a difference between encroaching and possessing, right?
Exactly.
That, you know, that that's a different thing, if you have a.
But I don't, I still wanna give anybody explicit permission to do it, right?
But I think landscaping is different than, right, yeah, I think.
And I have a comment on that, I know Michael's been trying to get a word in here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, my office and Blake's office, we receive a lot of these requests, and even if the council's position is not to relax or change. Kind of our historic policy, I would recommend that we create at least a formal method that residents can submit a request and be heard, even if that's an administrative decision.
I like that.
I think we're frustrating our residents, we're frustrating our residents because we have no formal process for them to go through and receive.
Then there has to be.
But it needs to be codified, so you have to.
Yeah, so even if we're not changing kind of the outcome, at least we create a process that they can be heard.
I I I think just. Kind of offline, bringing it in here, Jared, I think there's a point where ultimately the buck stops with us on some on these decisions, right? Um, and if we make it an administrative decision and they don't like it, do they have an appeal to the council for it eventually anyway, right, so. Somehow every thing, we we either say there's no exceptions.
Kind of, right. My, the reason I'm kind of pushing back is that it will never, like.
Yeah, it'll just never stop.
It'll it'll never stop, like you do, make an exception for one and now that it becomes a rule for all.
Yeah. Right, then there's seventy other or at least fifty.
Uh, so so if it's simply that we keep getting this and staff wants something to give to those people, here's, here's our.
Here's the official policy of no.
Here's our official policy on that, that's what you give them.
I I think this is a little bit different, but in a in a harsh word, waste. Uh, we um, are kind of going through this with this. But um, so we created a policy, here's a policy, uh, and then the buck stops actually with town, it's like you go work with her and it.
Right.
But then everybody's been called in, that's not why we want to talk to the board, so we did create.
The state sent you a copy of the rule.
Right, but we did create like a subcommittee, uh, that com- comprised of some of the board members and some of the staff members, that they can tell a group of people, they don't mind them coming in. They can come to this little subcommittee, present their appeal, their little appeals board, basically, I mean, that says, this is why we should be accepted to, that be a rule even though. We're told no, do you see what I mean, so that there, uh, it's not like we promote that, but it still gives an avenue for them to have a voice with their representatives on the board. And I and and I always think that that's really important for them to always feel like they can ha- they can come to the representatives of the council and have a voice, even though. Probably ninety nine but nine percent of the time, we're gonna say exactly the same thing the staff and the administration has already said, no, this is this is why it doesn't work, but there should be a a number of.
How's that, I just.
I don't know that it ruins the meetings for other, but right, that's part of it for me, but but what's the difference be, I mean.
Right, this is hard, right?
What's the difference between the the email I get from person or phone call of, hey, I have this issue over here, you're my district representative, can you tell me? You know, give me s- answer answer these questions or tell me what's going on and I make phone calls and here's what the rule is and we go out and look at it and see if there's something we can do or not, but if we. If we if we open up the can of worms of exceptions.
Right.
I agree.
I I agree with the exception thing, but I think there always, always should be a path that they can come before the council and.
Well, there is.
Or for some.
So I I have a recommendation on that, um. Sorry, yeah, I was was that timed or was that, okay, so.
Not timing, no.
Even though I do have an opinion, that was not part of it.
Before I tell you, before I tell you my recommendation.
Like what more do we need than public comment and accessibility of their representatives, etc.
So and and my my, the policy decisions behind my recommendation are, I think I'll lead out with those, and the first is that. You as the city council are the stewards stewards of public property, but you do not dispose of any public property without hearing from the public first, by state law, you're required to have a public hearing before you dispose of any public property.
Right.
And we're kind of bypassing that process here, if we're just making an administrative decision, even if it's codified to allow an encroachment, even though it's not an ownership change. Like Steve identified, it appears that way, right, a subsequent owner's gonna come in and say, oh, sweet, I have this piece of land, and they're not, there's no notice requirement from the prior owner. That their boundary line is really not where their landscaping might be or their fence might be, so that's one particular issue, the other would be the liability, right, if you're walking along a trail. And there are rocks and other bushes and landscaping that were put in by a previous owner. That are now no longer maintained by the current owner, you know, and someone falls or trips and we as the city aren't going out there maintaining that landscaping.
But it's still.
That liability comes back to us, yeah, right, not not the owner who put in the landscaping or the subsequent owner or the previous owner, so there's some liability issues I think that are connected to this as well. So with that policy direction in mind, I think my recommendation to you would be. Require any existing encroachments to.
Be removed.
Be removed, and we just have a strict policy that we don't don't entertain them, and I know you you don't like this, Jared, but the only remedy for existing.
I agree.
Encroachments is if there is some hardship, right, if they're, it's gonna cost them thirty thousand dollars to remove that, they can come to you and make that plea and say, can I leave it, right? And so in that sense, there's some opportunity for them to maintain an existing encroachment, but we just don't entertain that.
You know, there. There is a di- there is, you gotta be careful I say this, certainly when it comes to somebody putting in a piece of grass where it's otherwise weeds, you don't. A beautification thing is is a little different than in my mind than encroachment, but when it comes to, as you just put it, I think our policy has to be no.
Yeah.
I think our policy has to be no, and then.
And then there's a difference of enforcement, right, just like with other laws, there's the law there, but.
Yes.
Enforcement by compliance. Cross the material discretion, right?
If I set fireworks off on this side of the line in the street, am I going, right, am I getting a ticket, well, let's let's be reasonable, right, I mean, technically.
Right.
The the park strip is not mine, but I've put in irrigation system and grass and trees there, it's not mine.
Yep, but to your point. You open up, you give an exception for one person, everybody's gonna want an exception, and I'm not, I just.
This takes me back to the flag lot thing going back several years, like, that's part of where I think it. That policy came from is we're getting requests for exceptions all the time.
All the time.
All the time.
Everyone.
Every like week.
Every single one, we have an exception, although a lot of these are the same, but.
Yeah, so I think if you're okay with it, council, we we might propose some ideas, bring back some potential language for a code change, I know Jonathan and I have been working on this, I've been working on it with Michael. We've talked with Wendy about it, we have some ideas, and I think we can take this conversation and some of the discussion and kind of hone it down a little bit to bring back for another meeting.
Yeah.
Glad you think you can.
Okay, so we have two issues though, we need to get a policy that's, I don't think we have an adopted policy, actually written policy.
Not written, no, not a written policy.
So even if there's no change, at least we formalize it.
There you go, so that's what I'm saying, like if staff needs something to handle, says this is the, here's the.
Encroachments. No.
Answer is no. The outcome, that will be helpful, the second one is.
That's the direction for me, we have some applications before the city right now.
These. These sixty six, we're gonna need to share that and get direction on enforcement.
The existing.
Yeah.
We're gonna bring that, yeah, we'll bring that back with our with our recommendations and show you kind of what the extent of these existing encroachments are, can you?
That's why I brought up the garbage scene, because we're going backwards trying to fix problems that we that happened, going forward, our policy is no, we're not gonna do anymore though.
Can you bring us a list of all of them? Maps. Images, I know it's gonna be a packet.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
But going backwards, we have to look at each case and know, okay, how do you clean up the mess and we allow.
That's gonna be enough of an issue that we're gonna need to see China. Uh, sorry, talk about.
And and so that that would be what I think we have to do, we have to look at it and understand how to clean up the mess.
But I also think a policy that says no is one thing, but what what's gone wrong that's caused a hundred or however many.
Sixty seven.
Sixty seven encroachments in the city, like.
Most of them is that it's not enforced, right, because they're, I'm telling the contractor, telling them, oh, no, they will make that no big deal.
Those, most of those made a decision themselves. They're not, they're not using it.
I'm gonna use it.
Yes.
And a lot of it is along our trail system, where you you really wouldn't even notice if we didn't look, if we didn't look for it, we wouldn't notice it, yeah.
They're not, they're not even asking.
Right, and it's a domino effect, one neighbor does it and then the next one, and then the vinyl fence just starts moving.
And then all the neighbors lie like.
And that's exactly what happens.
Starts moving. Yep. Cause now I've got extra fifteen feet in the back of my yard.
One of my fire station properties in Draper that has a trap lane on it.
My concern is how much time it take, and I, if enforcement's gonna start hitting on this, he's gonna go out and start meeting people, if there's sixty six of them and there's that, and there's follow up and follow up. This is, this is five years of full time work for him to go through and just address it.
But I think that sixty six is really terrible.
Well, again, there's there's the rule, I mean, if you don't have a policy.
Yeah.
If we have a policy, and then the second question is enforcement.
Yeah, that I think we need, we need more information.
And then on and.
Looking back, and I, and in that case, it's okay, other sixty six, which ones are causing problems that clearly.
Be sixty six or over, it's gonna probably twenty there.
Right, I know that it's.
I think there's an, I think there's one other aspect about this that.
There's a good reason we can't start with a letter, you shouldn't need one.
There there's a, there's a part of this that we need to be aware of too, is that if we have property and it abuts, you know, residents especially. We have to be good stewards of that property too and not let weeds be going like crazy and causing unsightly, you know.
Well, but is it weeds or is it natural vegetation?
Yeah, it's weeds.
Okay, so then the the reason I get a lot of this is that I have Copper Creek, Copper Creek, right, the city, the firework area that we were talking about, and the Davison down there.
You know exactly what I'm talking about.
There are big areas of natural vegetation separating homes, right?
Natural vegetation. Tell you how you about that.
Right, right, and yeah.
And people don't like the sagebrush and stuff, so they want to extend their backyard and plant some grass and plant a tree or whatever, immediately.
But that's not water wise, I got you, Jerry.
But that's, that's that's totally, that and that's totally different, right, so the answer we've given them forever is, well, if you're asking us permission, we're gonna tell you no.
Ask everybody to take.
If you're asking if we're going to do something about it, if we see it, only if it's in the way really, right, and that's and that's different than.
Okay, but.
A true encroachment where you're taking property permanently by, you know what, our, we want our pool to be five, five feet farther than the property lines.
Agreed. Yeah, agreed, but I I do think there's an aspect of being good stewards over the land that we own, that abuts other property and making sure that we're.
Yeah.
Maintaining it and and doing our best to keep it well in enhanced, right?
There is a difference between natural vegetation and.
Yeah, well, we can, we can still cut back natural vegetation if it's really unsightly, right, I mean, that's not necessarily a terrible thing either, so I I guess I'm just saying. Yeah, maybe, sorry.
Those are pretty cheap, we can supply goats.
Yeah, that would, that would be too bad.
The Harriman goat.
Where's, where's, what, are you guys running goats this year?
We're going to, but.
So have we, I mean, that that's super short discussion that that I was gonna have, that you you refuse to.
Oh, you see why I needed that.
I know, I know, all right, um, so we previously said we were gonna move item two point seven up, so we will do that next, discussion of proposed amendment to the engineering standards, Jonathan.
Great, cool. Well, I do have a question.
Alrighty, I'll let you with this more detail of course.
Let's see.
So last month, we sat, this when we were downstairs, right, we were sitting, we're kind of chatting around the table a little bit about a proposal that we had given council and. Went back and I reviewed, pro- I I promised I would review the video, take a look and kind of just take some notes and do my best to take some good key takeaways and come back with a proposal, so I just. Wanted to read a few of these notes of the key takeaways of that sort of, um, the first one of it, and I'm paraphrasing these, it is, it's still important to have city council to review and approve any deviations to the standard of cro- uh, roadway cross sections. That was one note, uh, thirty two feet minimum drivable width is important if structures are on both sides of the road, and that thirty two drivable feet is what's currently cr- uh, in our standard today. On as the minimum roadway cross section, if structures are not on both sides of the road, then the twenty, the twenty six foot drivable width may be considered. And just, uh, so the twenty two feet of drivable width was what was proposed orig- uh, last time.
Is that include, is that saying that there won't be any structures on the other side, or is it, it's just empty right now and there could be later, right, developers love to do that.
Yeah.
It's a good point.
Build half a road.
And say, well, we don't have to do the full width and then then you never can get it wider, but you're gonna be.
So maybe.
You never structure there like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, I would, for me personally, I'd interpret that as there is no possibility for them to be, for us to consider it.
Yeah.
And already they do come in to develop the other side, they have to extend it right away that one.
Yeah, can we just put that in there to strengthen that?
Yeah. So that's, that's a good point, and so that, uh, so the next item here was public safety and first responder access is crucial. Um, there may be a concern with vehicles driving on sidewalks if there's no park strip, now that led, that that comment was brought up because we were talking about, hey, let's give. Let's give these developers some discretion on how to, you know, arrange the the roadway features. The next one was, an argument can be made that it is appropriate for park strips to be removed for sake of water efficiency and conservation. And then we should, and here the next point, we should allow for accommodation, uh, to developers of private roads to make deviation to the standard cross section. And then lastly, the park strips are helpful for plowing, street lights, sign placement, et cetera, so we kind of went back and forth just a little bit on park strips, we we do kind of wanna allow deviation, but we probably want to have council. Be party to that, and that was kind of my key takeaway, so so with that, what what I decided.
Sorry, was Jonathan wasn't part of that, and I know I've gone for meetings for the very much, but. He's. One of the things that had been brought up was that they wanted to away with the curb, right?
Yeah.
That that, and that's where I think most of us have.
Oh, like the seat for the rolling.
Yeah, cause then that, then that's dangerous.
The roll, mount- mountable curb.
Mountable curb, yeah.
That was the, so then it's where the snow.
And a lot of questions were also brought up about a park strip furniture or like signs, streetlights and items, you know, if we get rid of that park strip, you also don't give space to that, so, again, kind of going back and forth, so what. I thought I would do was just take a step back and propose to go back to the origin, what was originally written in the draft standards. Which was to require private and public roadways to conform to the city standard, but. In bold, it just says, any proposed deviation to the roadway cross section must be approved by the city council after recommendation from the city engineer and the planning commission. And take them more on a case by case basis, which essentially is supportive currently in the code, um, it states almost exactly that in city code right now. So that was what I was proposing and I, you know, I tried to nail down a another cool proposal roadway cross section, but like, let's just step back and let's just keep it with the roadway standard and then we. Allow the city council that discretion when they come in case by case.
So. I generally think this is the right way to go. But I have to raise this question of what incentive is there for there to be any private roads in the city anymore? They all have to conform to city standards, or it's gonna let the city build it and pay for it, right? There there's no, all the maintenance then becomes our issues, right? It. It definitely increases our costs and expenses on an ongoing basis, on an upfront basis, and. We, I think we have to be aware of that consequence, if we just say, there's one standard and that's the only standard, which I kind of think is the right way to go. We will never have private roads.
So I'll I'll take the other side of that, cause the selling point for a lot of these developments is that it's private. We have an HOA and it's, we have our own park and all that kind of stuff that's just us, right? I mean, so I I think there is, there still is that, what they sell it as is still there, cause I've always felt that, like, they're still selling these developments that way, but they're getting away with something. Smaller, cramming more in there, right, to make more money, and then eventually we're stuck with it and it's a smaller size than we're prepared to maintain, does that make sense?
That's like. Yeah, is that.
So you're you're right, I mean, they they, we may just end up with with fewer private roads, but I think that the, like, their main incentive, their selling point to have them is is still the same. But if we're gonna end up with these HOAs coming to the city, it has to be the city's.
So how do, how do we get, so what happens in twenty years when an HOA is out of money, is bankrupt, decides they.
That's why I think this is the right way to go.
That's, and that's.
And I'm not, I'm I'm saying, I'm not arguing against the standard, cause I think it's important.
You're just saying that that's a consequence.
Yeah, there's a, there's a consequence of this is increase O and M for the city along the long going.
But in my, as, as I think about that, what I say is, yeah, the O and M may be more, but. Replacement cost of a road is way more than O and M, right? And if we have to go in and now all of a sudden we're responsible for these roads and now we have to go in and widen them. And condemn property and do everything else trying to bring them up to any sort of a city standard that we can maintain, that's gonna be way more expensive than just a little bit of extra O and M that was, that was required.
Yeah, but then we go from, what was that, nine hundred thousand, they're proposing three point six million for road resurfacing, you know, then that's gonna be, you know, a five for six million dollar.
Well, that's kinda what we're. It's kinda the direction we're going though, is that eventually we take away those costs anyway, cause a lot of those HOA. A lot of those go away after, you know, a period of time. I look at some surrounding cities where that's the case, right? Crammed in all these townhomes and now here we are twenty, thirty years later and that HOA can't keep up with the maintenance, didn't keep up with the maintenance and. It's on the city to take care of it, and it doesn't fit any standards and.
And they're already talking about it.
Garbage to deal with, right? So I, i- i- it, there, there is a consequence to it for sure, they may not, but me, I'd ra- I'd rather weed them off.
And but not doing, you have, you have garbage problems, you have public safety issues you have.
I'd rather, I'd rather weed out those bad developers in my opinion at that stage than later.
Yeah.
I think, or to your point, Jared, I think there's still a lot of other, I guess, expectations of the buyers of that area of. It still is an HOA with those other amenities, which would still require them to be an HOA and make them a private road.
Yeah, but I, I, I owned a property in, uh, the ex-plat of Rosecrest, uh, up against Mount B. Corridor. And we had a HOA fee and public roads.
Public road.
Right, so I mean, it's, you can have both, and I think, but I think that's probably what we'll get, is have an HOA for the commonly held property in between and.
You can, absolutely.
And putting in the, the slide or whatever it is, but.
And now that developer has to make a decision of whether they want to make that part of the HOA and come and ask for the exception or not.
Right.
What do you think, Jonathan?
Well, it's a good question, I, so I was just gonna say, I think what you might, and I might anticipate is we just might see additional petitions than we have seen in the past. We're taking something that did exist in the code, but now we're just placing it and showing it on the standard, and a developer, where we might hear on this table say, well, now we're never gonna see private roads again, maybe developer will more so say. Oh, look, there's an exception for me to petition, and maybe we will see some of those, right? And so I'm not, I, my intent isn't to necessarily dissuade or encourage, but rather. You know, show what the process is.
It makes, they have to make a conscious decision of which way they wanna try and go.
And if, and if it makes sense, they can bring it to us.
And they have the option. They have the option to, to petition for that and to do what they've currently been doing.
Again, I, I still think that's the right way to go, I, I, I'm really supportive of this change, I, I really liked the work you've done, I'm appreciative, I'm. I, I guess I'm just articulating that, that's a change for likely, you know, pretty significant financial impact for the future of the city and. It's something we need to understand, right? There's, there's a consequence for that.
So my biggest concern about what's been presented as what was earlier was the smaller width and having something on either side of the road. Um, strengthening that up so that, um, it's only allowed if there's no possibility, um, due to geography or whatever. Uh, you know, along a canal where you can't build on the other side, that makes sense to give them some leeway. But, uh, you know, something where it's just another property on the other side and they just want, you know, to be able to, to say no, you know, that to me.
What if, what if there is a, sorry, but what if there is another property out there and that could in the future be buildable? But, but the only way that now this person can develop is to give his other half of the road to make the road wide enough to be spent, the rest of the work.
And, 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 and that's where I would look for staff to kind of give a proposal on that.
Yeah.
And straight, just strengthen it up, I'm not saying that we shouldn't allow it, I think that there's some valid validity to it.
Yeah. Yeah.
But that, I, I think that, uh, that's, that's gonna be a staff, that's gonna be this guy right here trying to weed through some wording to make sure that we're protected.
Would you be, would you be supportive as long as there's some.
Yeah, he does, he loves it.
As, if there's, as, yeah, I mean, it really, what it needs to be is, it needs to be, you can't just say, you know, if they want to, if they wanna do that, then they have to maybe possibly give an easement for future roads so that it's there and protected, right? Like, I, I could be okay with that.
That's, that's a really.
Cause if they gave an easement, right, if they, if they gave an easement to the, the adjoining property owner or to the city.
And they couldn't build into what could be needed later.
Into that, and it's guaranteed and codified that, that they, that the other guys wanna come in and do the same thing, they have to come in and build the larger road.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. And, and Mayor, maybe just to add to your point, you know, we, um, they would have to go to the city council.
Yeah, so that we could see that easement, it's make sure that that other property owner is protected.
You would take it at that case, on a case-by-case basis.
But I'm, I, I'm, the biggest issue I had with, with the smaller, uh, cross-sections that we get on the private roads is exactly that. Is that they're putting townhomes on both sides, crammed in, there's no street parking, there's no, you know, you, but people are forcing street parking because they don't have anywhere to park. And now you have, you know, a truck on this side, a truck on this side, barely room for one person to get through and.
And garbage day really sucks.
Garbage day sucks, uh, you know, I, I'll keep bringing up, watching a fire truck, ambulance, fire truck, and the ambulance can't leave because the fire truck's in the way, because there's trucks parked all onto the sidewalk, that's not okay. And so that's where I, I get frustrated, and so in a situation where we don't have that, where there's less of that issue. I'm a lot more willing to say, okay, that's not as big of a deal, because yeah, there's gonna be parking on the other side of the road. But you're gonna have a larger area where you can get cross-traffic and you're not causing that same problem because there's somewhere else for them to park. So I, I, I'm open to that as long as we solidify it into a way that allows us to, you know, protect the other property owners, but also. Protect public safety and those other things that come with it.
And maybe just the last question, just to make sure I got that right, is so say someone comes in with something around that twenty-six foot width, drivable width. Um, you would like staff to ensure that there isn't going to be something on the other side of that road prior to a making to planning commissioner, city council.
I mean, I, most likely these will be internal in the project, right? So it's not like this is gonna be very common where they have a road that they wanna put on the outside of the project. Uh, because our code requires it to face in, right? So usually that's not gonna be an issue. But if there's something in the project or an easement or something that protects that long term so that there's no ability for them to build, that gives us the assurance. And then I'm, then I'm far more willing to say, okay, that's fine, because we have a contractual guarantee that you are not going to build something there in the future, and that could be as simple as an easement.
Um, maybe before I, i- is it okay if I put Blake on the spot, Blake, do you have any additional thoughts to add as a drag on to that point?
No, I think, I think we've beat this one down pretty good.
No exception.
I know that too, I'm totally.
I just carried that over from the last one, I just wrote it. Just copy paste.
Is that, is that helpful? Does that help you move forward?
Um, yeah, it, it's sort of in my mind, I'm just thinking that we'll just make sure we review that, that, that's included prior to sending that along your way, now this is the last item on the standards. Um.
Let's get it done.
Next step, so I'm just, if we come, general meeting for adoption, do you wanna present our consent agenda with?
I. I don't know, what you guys thought?
Consent.
I don't wanna see it again.
You gotta see, I'd like to see the wording on this first, but I'm.
I've, I've.
As long as that's worked out.
It's on the consent agenda, you can look at it to your heart's content. Just don't make everyone else.
Just what?
Not with the consent agenda.
Hey, I, I always have the, I always have the option to request that it get moved off.
That's right.
Right.
And then we can talk about it for an hour. Alright, are you good?
Been a long meeting.
Is that what, you got what you need, John?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, uh, we will briefly touch on item two point six, Harriman City Fire Service Funding Discussion. Chase, any, or Alan, anything else that we need to discuss about this item?
No, Alan touched on all of it.
Okay, any other further discussion or questions by council on this item?
Nope.
Awesome, we will move on to the next item, that was super difficult. Um, item three point one, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Harriman City Budget Review, Alan, is there any further items that need to talk about this?
Yes, you do.
Any yet?
Nope.
Okay, fantastic, we'll move on to item four point one, Annexation Area Working Groups, Chase.
Thank you. So. As directed by council, um, we've been meeting with the developer, potential Olympia Hills Annexation Area. Um, we've had a few meetings with these working groups, specifically, we met with the Infrastructure Working Group on May thirteenth, um, the Finance Group on May seventeenth. And that was just a staff-only meeting, we didn't have any developer representatives at that meeting. Um, and then May nineteenth, we had a planning meeting where we discussed the design guidelines, and then May twentieth, we had a meeting where we discussed infrastructure road cross-sections. I've attached those agendas to the staff report as well as summaries have been emailed out to all of council and. Um, we've also had our communications team posting those summaries to a page within the Harriman City website that highlights all of those. We've had council, a council, at least one council representative, in, in some cases, two representatives at each one of these meetings. Um, and we have a few other meetings coming up where we also have council planning on being there as well as the developer. May twenty-seventh, we have an infrastructure meeting, June second, we have a development agreement meeting to start formalizing some of these other discussions, these more technical items that have been discussed. Seeing how those might be put into a development agreement. June third, we also have a planning and infrastructure meetings, two separate meetings.
Meetings.
And then on June fourth, we have a finance meeting to kind of look at some of those items that were discussed in the Bonneville Report tonight and ways that those might be, uh, financed through. Through, uh, the development agreement process and, and working with the developer going forward. So, uh, also.
You say that schedule again?
Yeah.
Or is it?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't include the future meetings, um, when I did my staff report, yeah, cause I didn't have those scheduled yet.
Wait, we have the ones. That's, I haven't been able to attend because they didn't schedule kind of last minute. So, we do have standing meetings every Thursday for the planning and infrastructure groups. And then we're, now the Finance Group and the NDA Group, we're gonna kind of pick up the bulk of the meetings, right on the front end, it was the planning infra- infrastructure groups. As they work through road cross-sections, you can see how, how fun those can be and how much discussion can stem around those there. And, uh, and now we'll move into more of the finance and development agreement stage, I anticipate, we'll still have those other groups meeting, um. And we'll be talking about other, you know, mostly the, the design guidelines and working on those, because as we all know, that's the bulk of a development agreement, right, is the design of, of the development. So to go over those meeting schedules again, May twenty-seventh is the infrastructure meeting. June second, there's a development agreement meeting. June third, there's a planning meeting and an infrastructure meeting.
I believe infrastructure had to have been canceled.
What's that, infrastructure?
On June third.
On June third, so just planning on June third, okay.
Everybody's got daughters graduating or sons graduating.
I have. And then June fourth, um, which is Friday, there will be a finance meeting. And like we have with all the other meetings, we'll post a summary, um, of that meeting to the website. Send the agenda around, so everyone's gotta copy that as well.
We get links to the, wherever it is on the website.
Yeah, we send that out.
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
Harriman.org slash Olympia Hills.
It's on the homepage, there's a, a link to the.
Yeah, right on the front.
In fact, I think it's right on the banner, uh, at the homepage, there's a link to the Olympia Hills landing page. So it breaks down all those different groups and again, all the different summaries.
It's good, I, I, I went and looked and it has links to everything and video things already teed up to the moment when that conversation's happening and it is really good.
And we have started posting as well, some of these, the Bonneville Report's already up, um, the traffic impact studies up, some of those other items that we've circulated already are up. And again, as these conversations continue and more and more images and, and things are shared between, um, the city and the development team, we'll post those as well.
May I, may I, um, yeah, a few minutes to talk about some of the other discussions last night.
Yeah, I, and I, I think that's helpful as well, this process is getting the input from council, right, because you're the ones that drives the policy decisions that we take back to these working group meetings as well.
I, I will tell you that, um, I watched, went back and watched some of the meetings, and kudos to staff who never go back and watch meetings.
How dare you?
Uh, I was staff during some of them, I've probably just felt, probably, uh, just because sometimes it's like. Kinda take it a long time to deliberate, not that it's not necessary, but sometimes I, in your sense, it would probably be a little more difficult.
Have to live through it twice.
Exactly.
Sometimes three or four times.
Exactly, um, so I appreciate that, but, but I had an opportunity obviously to, to listen to it. Um, without emotion being involved in it, and sometimes remove the heat of it, there's a lot of emotions involved in it and things like that, so. I will, I will just plead, um, my case to y'all and my, my assumptions is I probably will not turn the heat up, but I will tell you some of my feelings. Um, there was a few instances that we talked about. We talked about in the planning, the joint planning and city council meeting about making it very public. And, but then in this meeting, when it was talked about recording those meetings, there was, there was consensus and then all of a sudden there was not. Based on Chase's comment saying, well, it's, he didn't think that the developer would be as forthcoming if it was recorded. Okay, which I can tell you, every single person that I've, I've said, what do you think about that? Every single person, you know, the person they say, what are you trying to hide? And so it's like, whether we want that to be your perception or not, and the fact of the matter is, I honestly do not believe that's real. I don't believe that anyone's trying to hide anything that's going on. So that is, is automatically a perception that people jump to if you're, if you're unwilling to record a meeting. Especially when a substantial is there. There was also comments about, it's never been done before, okay? And then I heard that, I was like, I know, but that's what Harriman does, his things have never been done before. Chief Carr and his team are the shining example of doing things that have never been done before, setting the bar higher and bringing everybody up to that level. And I love that about him, I've listened to many different things that they've implemented, things that other departments go, oh, no, you don't do that, you shouldn't do that, and he's like, no. This is the way we're gonna run Harriman, this is the way we're gonna run Harriman, please turn it on. And our public loves them, uh, do you guys ever get negative feedback about the police? I don't. Well, maybe somebody that got busted for doing something wrong, I don't know, but as a general rule, our public loves them. And I think that's why, because they watch them make people rise to this standard. And so in my mind, just erring on every possibility of tran- transparency, I'd love to, to hear what's going on. Now, it's gramable, correct, most people will never grammar that record, but it's there if they want to. There was a comment made about, um, we, we've served each other on different boards, right, we all go represent this council on, on different boards. Every board I serve in, and I'm assuming every board you serve on, guess what, they're recorded. If at any point somebody calls and says, hey, you guys gotta get a whole big council on the board, cause she went, she's going, we're all about making boards. And I can say, no, I'm not, well, I can verify that because it's recorded, that recording covers my butt. Because it, I could say, no, that's, that's not what I've said, was taken out of context. Anytime somebody's taking notes, I think our staff, staff is very valuable and does a great job at everything they do. But taking notes is, um, taking a person's interpretation of the things that are important to this place in that meeting. And maybe there was something that I went, but I really needed to hear that, I didn't really needed to hear that comment, it wasn't in the notes. And have zero opportunity to hear it. And so I just think that it's important, it's had that accessibility, so that if we want to, we can do it. Same with the public, if they want to, I don't think the public's gonna be grammar this, very, very small percentage will ever grammar these records. And if they do, kudos to them for wanting to be that involved, to see what's really going on in these things. And kudos to us, because you know what, there is nothing to hide, right? Now, and I think it helps the developer too, and do you know why I think? Because developers get a crappy light shined on them too, some of them deserve it. But most of them don't, most of them are just earning a living, they're, they're trying to make the most money they can out of the development because that's their job. And so I think that by having that, and again, puts them in the same line of transparency, look, we're sitting down and having honest negotiations with the city. We need to, we need to have this, this result, the city wants to have this result, so we're working together to try and meet in the middle and figure out what's best for the city. So I really, I really passionately feel like, I, I think that it's not a big deal, it seems like when you guys record to push buttons here and there, you know? I, I'm not tech, I've not been involved in your technicalities as far as the way this building operates, but it seems pretty simple if you're in a meeting to push buttons.
With our new system, it's very important, I like.
Yeah, I wish it was easy.
It's not working.
Well, hopefully, you guys, yeah, I'll get that figured out with technology nowadays, but it seems pretty simple, so. And I understand that, I think Blake brought my concern, oh great, so then every single thing from now on, every meeting we have has to be recorded? And I'm not, I I'm not proposing that at all, I I think that this this situation is exactly as Steve described, he talked about it being. Much different than the other things that we that we've been participating in, so let's treat it just a little bit differently, and I think that we, I think that if we lead out on this. This city is not the only city that's gonna face things like this all across the state. I was in Duchesne the other day and they have a stoplight and they're probably gonna have to have another one, okay? Really?
The uproar.
Right, but I'm just saying that, uh, or exactly, exactly, look at Saint George, so. So there's cities all across the state that are gonna have to deal with it, so let's lead out and say, this is how Harriman does it. We are transparent, we're recording these, so there is not, there doesn't have to be the suspicion constantly of government. And they're and they're not saying, oh yeah, you guys are having these meetings, you don't want us to know, you won't re- record them, eliminate it. And I think it's good for the developer and I think it's good for the council, I think it covers both of our butts. Because it just says, look, no, that's not what, that's not what I said, it was taken out of context and if you don't believe it, go grammar the recording and listen to it. Anyway, though, I feel, I feel really strongly about that, I think that it's important, I also feel like it's really important, today we had the Bonneville study. And he's great, huh, bring my, he's a, he's a great guy, but um he's funny, I love his little bow tie. But um they they made some really important points, what I feel like are really important. We saw a lot of things that said, can we, can we, can we? And I think that the really, the question should always be for us, it should be, should we? Okay, I can promise you, if this is the zero case, my husband, I'm sure to know it, I can fit a square peg in a round hole. It doesn't, nothing looks pretty after I do it, but it's like, okay, I'll figure out how to shove it in there and make it work, right, but I shouldn't do that. Right, so I really think that these committees, and I think everybody's on the same page with this, I think these committees are really saying, what should we do? For the best interest of not just our current residents, but any future residents that come in, that come into our city. One really important thing that was mentioned tonight was the plan goes out the window. So when I hear comments and see posts or whatever about about things like, it's already proven the county, we have no choice. If we bring it into Harriman, we can control it, let's make that a reality, not, let's not just say. We're controlling the money, cuz that we would control, right, we get all the money. Let's really control the destiny of it by saying, you're right, the plan does go out the window, so come to the table with us, let's make it smart. I'm not suggesting that that we that we bring it in at A one. Right, which is assuming what, I don't know what is on that, well, it's still different now, but I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying we come to the table and 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 work on that together. And make sure that that is in harmony with everyone, that we truly have a good negotiation. Regardless of what was was taken care of at at the county, um, only other thing, I'm sorry, please labor this. The other thing I would ask is is the M D A committee, I think you and I heard that? I really, 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 I've watched, or does my term on the council end before that? I watched a city count, I've watched the city get burned, would be a really big understatement on M D As, okay? Now, I believe that we made a good change in you, right, um on on M D As and how to protect ourselves on those. But I think the more eyes, the better, I remember distinctly on the Dancy one, literally, we're ready to prove it, and for some reason, this is not to my heart, because I usually don't catch tiny details, but. There was a sentence that said, you get this and this, it was supposed to say or, but it said and. Would have cost, it it could have subjected us losing millions or even a real problem, right? But just one little word like that, so the more eyes, the better, and I understand this committee, but I think that we really should expand the committee. I think every single member of this council have got to play a super active role in the M D A, because that's the critical document that. If if they decide to come in, that's a critical governing document, it's gonna to be really the most important. I also would be, um Heather Garcia on planning commission, Michael, you remember? Her comment on M D As was like, they're frustrated with M D As because they, at this point, they don't even know how to make sure that we're adequately doing the design guidelines, correct? And so that's why planning commission is still being frustrated with it, so. So I think it would be a good valuable idea to even include one or two of our planning commissioners on that M D A board, I think that we should establish a robust committee. That's taking a look at all of that, I also believe that we have community facilitators, the community should be involved in that too. Chief, would you guys have like, um, what you're, you have citizens advisory board or something, right? I think it's not a bad idea at all to have some of our community facilitator or some be, some representatives from the community. Sitting down and hammering, looking through some of that too, I don't mean to really complicate this whole thing, but it is a complicated issue. And if we don't have a good robust team really looking at that and putting many eyes on it, we're gonna screw up again. I, it's probably not a good technical way to say it, but it's constantly happening, even our very last one, we had issues with it. And and that's just barely happened, so let's let's make sure we're not making those mistakes, you play a critical role in that. But I think that you have two eyes, right, and and if if there's more heads involved in that, I think it's really important. So sir, there's my sermon.
Thank you, Sherry, I appreciate that, that uh, I I I respect you and I respect uh that that opinion and that insight. Uh but I think you you, there's a lot of value to some of the things you said, so I I appreciate it. Any, I'm, is this something that we wanna have further discussion on right now, or do we wanna think about it before we have any further discussion on what Sherry has brought up?
I'll just say that I think, at least my my own impression and understanding of, especially obviously the M D A part is, is that obviously. It's not up to me and you being the representatives to finalize that, we're there to to give it and there's. And then we send it out to everybody to get eyes on, so I I I agree with you, I, we all have to have. We all have to have substantial time and and effort put it, put into that. And uh and I think that again, my understanding of the way that we're, we've kind of approached this is just to be the initial. And then get it out to everybody and let them do it, including, I think, damn, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, on the communication side of things, there's, there's plans to have. That done at the community facilitator level as far as having those discussions and taking it out to the folks, so. I I think, I think we're, at least my understanding is, is the direction we're heading, I think falls right in line with what you're, what you're hoping to accomplish there, and I agree with that, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think we did have a conversation about um adding planning commissioners to some of the committees and there was a. Some limitation on having commissioners.
I have expressed caution, but maybe I was overly cautious, Chase.
Because these are land use decisions, both within the development agreement, within a potential zone, within design guidelines that the, that the planning commission approves, or that they see before it gets finally approved. I think there's some value in having them come in with blank eyes, right, and.
Good point.
But certainly, there's that full process that it will go through.
It does go through them.
And I, and I actually addressed that with them on Thursday at their planning commission meeting, that, you know, you're involved in the development agreement process. It's not just a wave by for you guys, there's some say that you get to have and recommendations to make to the city council before it.
Yeah, I forgot about that piece of it, where they had to have to pretty much go into unbiased.
Right.
Okay, awesome, thank you, uh uh I think that was healthy, Sherry, thank you for bringing that up. Um a- anything else that we need to be updated on this, Chase?
No, I, Mayor and I had a conversation briefly in the hall, he asked, you know, what can I share, what can't I share, and the answer is nothing, none of it's private, right? It's all, all the discussions are had that you all participated in, you can go and share with anyone who asks you. You know, any records that we create, any grammar, or they're all grammable, you know, to a degree, um but for the most part, they don't be public records. Um and that's our tent, right, it's just to, rather than making someone grammar that, just dump it, dump it out to them in the first place. Yeah, there's no restrictions on any of the conversations and the developer, development team that we're meeting with, they understand that as well, that you will have conversations with private citizens, with. Amongst yourselves, right, that that are gonna be out in the open and they're not, they're not opposed to that.
And what is their hesitance on recording it?
That, so my my hesitance was, and I think my wording was that, I think, recording conversations where negotiations are taking place hinders. Open conversation, not that the developer necessarily was, and you you've listened to it more previously than I have, so maybe I did say developer. But my recollection was that it hinders both parties from being open, fully open with their conversation.
When you're basically actively negotiating.
Right, it's that, that's kind of where I, is a sticking point for me because. At least my perception and I think what's been held on the public is that these aren't negotiations, we're analyzing. This on its merits, there shouldn't be a negotiation taking place that they can't hear.
And and that was a poor word choice on my part, but you know, there's also a part of it, all of this is a negotiation, right?
So.
Yes.
So that comes to you.
And.
It all comes, but it does, it all comes to us, right?
It comes to us.
Right, so the question I would ask one is, has anybody asked the developer if they have an objection to it being recorded?
I haven't specifically, but.
Could, would you be opposed to reading out to them and just ask?
Why don't we ask them, if that's the hesitancy, then let's ask them.
I'm just gonna speak up, cuz I I have a, I have a concern about that, in that. No other applicant for any action in the city has ever had to have any of their administrative meetings recorded.
We actually asked you to record meetings, I think it was during the mountain ride, you you were, you were sending us recordings of meetings that were done not very long ago.
Those were just work meetings?
Yeah, those were just the work meetings, I sent you the recordings of the work meetings.
But the 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 administrative function that our city staff performs in discussing and negotiating. Uh not neg- negotiating, but working through the whole process of the application is usually done completely behind closed doors.
With.
And without any involvement of council.
But again, is this a negotiation?
And no record, no record being kept, no record being published. And then after it's gone through the sausage maker, it comes to the council for the decision at the end, and then there's the public part of the process. You know, you talked about doing something that's never been done before, I wanna reiterate that what we're doing right now has never been done before.
Elaborate on that, cuz annexations happen all the time, what has never been done?
Right.
The process.
But the process that we are taking, where we're taking the council members who represent the public. And inserting them into legis- or administrative discussions doesn't happen.
It perhaps hasn't happened in this city, but I think to say it's never happened before, correct, but but I also.
I I've, I spent hours searching city records um. Uh across the state, looking for information about administrative meetings that have been recorded, I couldn't find notes, I couldn't find agendas, I couldn't find minutes. I couldn't find even a calendar that suggested when and where meetings had ever happened before.
I guess so, but what you interject, it changes from administrative, once you interject legislative people into an administrative meeting.
So when I'm talking about doing something.
It's no longer just an administrative meeting, cuz you've interjected policymakers into that meeting, that's my only point. Like the other day, I'm trying to think, I think it was maybe Justin, he talked about the other meeting they had, remember? They had that meeting to bring the meeting to us, that meeting, sounds like all these are are recorded, that that staff.
That's actually been a, made a a point of why we're not invited to certain meetings, because if a policymaker is there, it changes it to a negotiation.
Yeah. Yeah. Which changes one city, that's my only point, it's like, I don't think those meetings should be recorded, I mean Blake and Justin and their, their team are sitting down going, hammering through that, no. Those are administrative meetings, those, get on with the work, get on with business, but as soon as we have policymakers inter- introducing to those. Very actively in those meetings, it feels like it takes on a much different meaning than just administrative, it's no longer administrative, because we're not administrators, we're policymakers.
Well, I I mean. So every meeting that we have with mall, would you want recorded?
No, it doesn't, you want that be the standard.
Because we have, it would be everything. Everything, even when you're coming in and just.
I don't think. But but I, I think that 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 you're kept in the net to rot, I think we can very simply say, because this is. A very big annexation, we can set parameters around it, if we have any further annexation.
We're saying, we're, but to me, to me, there's like one major sticking point. One is that we're holding these out to be public. And the reason that we're not recording them is we're afraid the developer might not be as hoping. Again, why don't we ask the developer, because to your point, a lot of times they get a bad rap of trying to hide things, well, this is an opportunity for them.
No, there's a part of this, there, there's a fundamental part of this question that is troubling to me. And this is the idea that somehow a meeting that the city council is involved in is anything less than the public being fully represented. That is our job and that is what we do, and if somehow that is insufficient for public interest. To say, members of the council are attending these meetings, are we, they are taking notes, there are notes being taken. Here's an agenda, here's who's coming to the meeting and here's what we're talking about. We have an opportunity to report back to the rest of the council on our impressions from that, that's part of what this time is set up for. Uh that is as, that is more transparent and more public than anything else we do, other than our city council meetings.
But I guess, I guess there's there's.
And and the idea that somehow, no, no, I wanna finish this, this idea that somehow, well, if you don't have anything to hide, then why are you doing it? That's a terrible rationalization for doing so, that's like saying, well. If you're not hiding anything on your taxes, why don't you share it, if you're not, I mean, that 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 kind of thing is like, terrible precedent.
Well, li- well likewise, Steve, that can be, Steve, that can be turned completely the opposite way for what the reason Chase gave not to record it. Is that they might not feel as open to say what they wanna say.
He's, no, to be clear, he's saying, we may not be open to saying what we wanna say.
That, that, that's not what was stated in the last meeting.
But but, uh, to me, that's fundamentally opposite of having an open, public, transparent process. My bigger thing is, as I've said from day one, is let's record them, cuz I wanna hear the discussion. Chase sent out a summary for the finance meeting, committee meeting that I couldn't go to. And what, I mean, even minutes of a meeting are are minutes, right? I look at the summary and and then we just need to work on this as well, but I have so many questions just just from the summary, right? This is the first meeting of finance working group accordingly, the group opened with meeting by discussing objectives, these will be driven by the council, but the group wanted to have a list of recommended items the council to consider as well. Well, what are those items and what was the discussion around those items, like I.
That's what this meeting is.
I want, I wanna hear that, and then.
This is the opportunity to ask those questions.
And then the, well, it doesn't, it doesn't say that, right? And then the group also discussed the pros cons of financing impacts through traditional impact fee model as opposed to a contract fee. Which would be built into the M D A in order to more fully um fully calculate a contract fee, the impacts and associated costs need to be flushed out of other working groups. Like, it it's a, it's a good, like summary, but I'm, I want the details, what is the difference between them? I've never even heard of a of a contract fee, so what is the difference?
So, so is that a question you're asking to have answered right now?
I have, I have those questions to ask, but just as an example, like with this, to say that we're establishing this process and something's never been done and this is the exact way to do it. I'm hoping that as we go through the process, we can adjust how we're doing it so that it works better. Because I also made the point in trying to schedule these meetings, apparently, we're gonna have them at, like, everyone's committees are gonna meet every week, like that is, that, that is a lot. I mean, to be running a business, a family and everything else, regular council meetings. My board assignment, which has three committees, it's like, that's tons and tons of meetings that that's a little much. And if it, we have to move quickly and we have to do that, great, but but I need to have a way to do that, if I miss one of these meetings. I do go back and look at the recording and listen to the discussion so that I'm prepared the next time, but I don't have the opportunity to do that with these.
There is a difference, for for me, there is a, and I think this kind of goes to Steve's point a little bit, there is a, there is a, we we've used a public process a lot, but. There's clearly a fundamental difference between a public meeting that is required to be noticed and be accessible and all those things. And a public transparent process where we are providing all of the information that's talked about in these meetings, including the agendas and bullet point notes and in minutes from them and. And. And so I think that, I think that there's this, as we talk about it, there's been a confusion that when we said. A public and transparent process, and that meant that we were going to then transition this into all public notice I, noticed meetings. Were, which would require the recordings and all of those types of things, I think we are clearly in a negot- where, which would require the recordings and all of those types of things, I think we are clearly in a negotiation, it was stated tonight in the in the update from Bonneville that if they annex, then zoning goes out the window and the M D A goes out the window on all of those things. So clearly we are in a negotiation because there is no way that a developer is going to annex without having those things clearly tied down through these meetings and these agreements to complete that annexation process, so it is an annex, so it is a negotiation.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that, I appreciate that being stated, cause that was not how it was put across the first meeting when we put this in place.
But 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 I think.
That first meeting, that the proposal was to have these committees to simply analyze whether it can be done inherently or not, it wasn't gonna be a negotiation.
But I think you've been through enough, I think you've been through enough M D A process to know that that is clearly a negotiation of what that development is going to look like.
I'm I'm gonna step, I'm gonna step in, guys, uh, at this point, uh, I, what I do not hear right now is a majority of the council giving different directions to staff than what we have previously done. And so in in order to make sure that we are facilitating, uh, the, you know, as as much as we can and and utilizing staffs appropriately, we request that council members, if they have questions in regards to specific items from what they may have received, if we could move on to those items and focus on on that, since we're not gonna, it does not sound that we are going to be giving different direction to staff tonight.
Hmm, Mary, I I also have a think, one other, two other things actually. Another deep concern to me is we are bringing on a an amusement manager, and June, he's missing all of these meetings. If they're recorded, it gives him an opportunity, he's working, so he can't just tune in to everyone. It gives him an opportunity to really understand, listen to it, hear that and and digest that information, so I think that it's a disservice to him not to be able to participate in those, and that is a, that is a way that he could, is if we would record it. The other thing I would ask, and I would ask you all to consider this, is I do believe in conjunction with, and I don't know if these are planned, tell me or not, but I believe this council holds it to the public to hold a few town halls in regards to this, I think that we should, we should send.
I think that's been in the communications plan all along.
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't seen like, uh, exactly when those town halls are scheduled or anything like that, could you get that out to so I can schedule?
Couldn't schedule them until we had some sort of, yeah, we don't have an application, we do have a notice.
We don't have an application, yeah.
Okay. Uh huh.
But we, we couldn't schedule anything before that, so that's how we do the process.
So we have a notice of intent to annex.
Notice of intent to file a petition, to file a petition, so it's like the pre-pre-application, yeah.
To file a petition, so.
To file a petition, so.
Right, exactly. Okay, so what what, okay, and Blake, I asked you to respond to this, I didn't get a response. When I was at the infrastructure meeting, there was a a date popped out that we needed to have this on planning commission.
I looked through the minutes and I couldn't see anything on June fourteenth, so I didn't know.
So, okay, well, tell me, there was definitely a date popped out, I mean, when you wanted this on planning.
So June fourteenth was the date?
The Monday.
That was a Monday, that must be the date that everything was gonna be, the groups were all gonna get together and have their comments back to the development team to say, here's what's in the design guidelines that that we don't like, or that we do like.
I I guess this is, this is exactly the reason why it'd be really nice to have a recording, cause I could go back and say, no. I I distinctly wrote down that that it needed to be on the planning commission agenda.
I think we were looking at that, because if they wanted to be on a July first meeting, we had to have it by then, so that would be around July, July first second.
Okay. So 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 there was a plan, was my point, that that you have, you have a, you have a structured plan to have this on planning commission by a certain date, so would you enlighten me as to uh, how that came about and why we're on that, on that schedule?
I think it's all, I think that's been clearly communicated, that's an anticipated timeline
The timeline.
of these things that have to happen in order to meet a final annexation deadline, October twenty minute.
If they, by by if they want to annex this year, right?
Right, it's January first, yeah.
So, su- for sure, and I guess, I guess that's another thing too, that a little bit um concerning to me is that what I've I've watched happen, guaranteed I've watched happen, is we have rushed M D As through so we can meet a generic, uh, artificial timeframe from a developer, and we've screwed up. And so that is deeply concerning to me, I know, I know that you can, we can pacify that off and and say different things, but
But I think.
it's very concerning to me that that we're we're staying here, being being here.
I I appreciate that concern, Sherry, and I I'll say there are three seats up for election, and when I was, uh, when I was elected, I made it very clear at the time that I was going to serve for four years. And that I will serve, regardless of what happens in in an election for reelection, I will serve to the end of those four years, because that's my job. I don't know what will happen, uh, you know, in November, and because I don't know what happens, uh, I would like to see this, I would like to see this happen and have this addressed before this body uh, necessarily changes, because uh, and and in order for that to happen, we have to meet a certain deadline, so I wouldn't say it's an arbitrary deadline set by the developer, I would say this is uh, maybe being driven more by just the facts of this body could turn over, uh, and and that's, that's a reality of the way our political system works. So for me, I do want to see it done by the end of the year so that that what I feel is best for the city gets accomplished. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what the other members of this body think or feel, but I would not put that one on the developers, I would say that this, that that I, I would just take more ownership of that, saying that I want to see this done by the end of the year, because I don't know what's gonna happen in three or four months, and so I'd rather be on that process so that we can, we can so that I can accomplish what I feel is the best, in the best interest of our residents.
So, and I will, I will too, thank you David, I will too go on the record to say, that is, is not how I feel, I definitely was elected for to for your term, and I'll continue to work on the best interest of the residents for the next, for for the next few months, regardless of any outcome, and and if I still continue to work through the process and I don't feel like we're to that point, I could care less if I'm part of that decision, I just want to make sure it's somewhere right, whether it hits the timeline or not.
And and that's fair, and I I can absolutely appreciate that, and I, I would say, I don't think anybody here thinks that any member of this body uh, would do anything other than serve uh, until the end of their term, because they, uh, I think we all have it truly believe that we are always doing what we can to do what's best for our residents, and I believe staff believes that, and I believe that, uh, we believe that we we hold each other accountable to that, so I I appreciate that and I appreciate those concerns. Um, did you get your question answered by Blake?
A quick, a quick comment though, I I think, I think that we've been, as a body, as staff, as everybody involved, I think that we have been very deliberate and methodical as to how we've approached the process, and to, to to ensure that we're not rushing something through by saying if, and it's still a big if. If this is, if, in order to make a January first if, and there's a big if here, you start to work backwards of what that timeline and anticipated timeline would generally have to be in order to make that work.
Sure.
And I think that by going through that very systematic approach, we may get into it and say, we can't meet the timeline.
And and that's what I needed to hear, I appreciate that.
We may get into it and say that we, that there is just too much here for us to get, we don't know that yet, I don't know that yet, at least I can say that. But we do know that in order to do that, we anticipate that X, Y, and Z have to have to happen or at least start happening in these, at these dates in order to at least allow us an opportunity to complete that, and again, I think that there are still a lot of questions for all of us to say, one, is it feasible to meet that timeline? Can we get through the M D A and these other things that we have to? And we're still at the very front end of that, our first meeting we have next week, we'll see how much work we have, and then that's where we communicate back to the rest of the body and say, here's, here's what we talked about, here's the input of it, what's your guys' input, and we really start to narrow down of of the work that has to go into just that one piece, the M D A, prior to an actual annexation being approved in October, so I think we've been as deliberate and thoughtful as we can heading into this, and again, making this um, eh, at least what I think is, to Steve's point, is more transparent we ever have in in this type of process. May not rise to the level of everyone else's w- opinion or definition of what that is, but I think we are doing all that we can to be very thoughtful and deliberate as we do that.
I'd like to make two comments. Um, first is in in reference to something you just said, um, just being a part of these infrastructure meetings, the the scope of the things that are being discussed is huge. Um, I mean, there was an hour discussion about road widths versus our standards versus the, the ways that Olympios was proposing exceeding our standard widths and why they were doing this and what they were hoping for and and, you know, um, what it might cost if you made a road two feet wider on each side and how that would impact things and I mean, that, just, just that conversation on road widths was mind boggling, right? And I guess the reason why I'm I'm advocating so strongly for these groups to continue to push through is this, is that they're in order to get to a yes no answer, right? We have to get through all of that stuff before we can get to a place where we can make a yes and answer, right?
I agree, I agree.
So that's why my my position is continue to advocate for getting into it, asking those questions, to seeing where, you know, not what we want, cause we have standards, we have plans, we, we have definitions of what we want, we have a clear expectation of what our plans were for them, they have an approved plan for what they want to do, and there's differences between those. And so there's, so some of that is understanding what they want and why they want it, some of it is understanding what we've planned and why we planned it that way. And then a part of that is a, a negotiate, well, we'd be happy to meet you here, well, okay, we're happy to do that with you, right? And then once all of that stuff gets completed, then there's this huge analysis that has to take place, right? That's where Alan has to plug in, okay, the road now is four feet wider on X number of miles equals so many more square feet of O and M for, you know, on, right, that's the kind of stuff that has to be done, so whether or not that happens in this timeframe, I have no idea, whether or not we're gonna actually all come to an agreement on a bunch of these points, I have no idea. There, there's so many off-ramps along the way for us as a city to say, yeah, we're not happy with this process, or for the developer to go, we're not seeing the result we want to do, we're gonna stop it, right? And and that can happen clear up until almost the last minute, right, October twenty eighth through twenty ninth or whatever that date is. So, you know, I don't have any fear about rushing things or pushing things, cause and and this, this is my second point. There are frequent and strong um, points of of disagreement between members of the council on any different point or idea or whatever.
No, there's not.
Um, and I think that's, that's actually beneficial in a deliberative body, to have difference of opinions and you know, churn through it and work through it and be inefficient and unproductive and get bogged down in the mud, right, that's kind of our job is to, to make sure we're doing things right. Um, but the one thing that I don't I I'm gonna say I don't like how it's being portrayed or what the potential insinuation is, not that that's what your intent is, but an unintended insinuation. Is that any individual member of this body, or this body as a whole, is acting in anything less than full integrity at all times. That has anything less than the best interest of our residents at all times. That, that our city staff, or some members of the council, or some parts of staff, are somehow acting out of integrity that are failing in their, their duty or their responsibility in representing the citizens of Harriman correctly and rightly. That, that narrative is frankly wrong. And secondly, it is conversations about what do you have to hide? Blah blah blah, you know, those kinds of things, that lead into the narrative that somehow municipal government is not serving the people well. And, and so I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that there's something wrong with recording a meeting, that's not the point, it's just if the fundamental aspect is the public doesn't trust us, because we're not recording a meeting, then we're failing completely in in our responsibilities as as a municipal government. Are, eh, I mean, that's, that's a terrible place to be. And if we're saying the only way to gain that trust back is to record every meeting that we do and publish it for everybody to listen to and for all time, I I just think that's a unfair burden to place on every applicant that ever wants to do anything in the city. That means when somebody wants to talk about an encroachment, we have to record it and publish it and send notes and who was in the meeting and do all that.
See, see, nobody's, nobody's the decision yet, yeah.
And I know nobody's saying that, but the problem is, is we're setting a precedent, just because it's a a popular item that we should somehow circumvent every process that's ever been done.
No, you have, no, I have to stop you there, because that, that's opposite of what you have been saying, right? And I, and I've said my piece on this subject, and as David has said, we're not, we're, we're going where we're going and and that's fine. But that's not what Cherry or I are saying at all, you have said this is different, right? This particular project is different and we're gonna do this differently, that's what we're saying, and if that's the point, and that's what the the majority has decided,
Right, and we have, we are doing it differently.
That's a lie.
I, and my intent was not to 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 make you feel that that way, I just think that we just live in a climate in this nation where people inherently distrust elected officials.
Understood.
And and I was just thinking that that's, that aids in a solution, police officers, you know what they wear? Body cameras, you guys, did they throw any body cameras? Why, cause you're all are out there corrupt doing things you shouldn't know, they do it.
No, that's been an insinuation, it's a very hard call.
But exactly, exactly, but.
Right, that's, they have to do it to show that they're not doing something, which is what it all shows, right?
Exactly. Exa- well, I guess that, but that's, to me, it's the same thing, it's it's like, okay, we'll show you we're not doing anything.
As it turns out, yeah.
Right, and 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 to me, it's, it's the same, it's the same thought, right, it's the same, I I I I'm sorry that that.
I understand the thought, but the fact that it's being articulated in in a meeting like this,
Right.
it's giving credence to the idea that there's something that that there's an attempt to obfuscate from the public, that there's a specific try to not include the public,
I I specifically said there was.
when in fact, the opposite is what's happening, there's an attempt to give more information than's ever been given,
But I said that. But I said that.
To involve more people than have ever been involved, to do this in a way that, to quote your words, it's never been done before, to lead out on a new process, which we are doing. I'm, and and with a great deal of respect for the point you're trying to make, I still think that it is, um, the idea that we're not, that the, that the direction of the council is to not do it that way, isn't, isn't an attempt to mislead or hide anything from the public, and that, and I want to just be clear about that.
And and I. And I, and I, I specifically even made those comments that it's not the case. Eh, but I, but I do believe that it helps dispel that, just like I believe police officers go out there to serve the public ninety nine point nine 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 percent of the time, there are a few times that there's a bad apple, just like, I think most public servants appear to serve the public. For goodness sakes, I wouldn't do it for any other reason, but occasionally.
But there's a difference, Sherry, when they're out in public conducting the public's business, there's a recording. When they're having private negotiations or or discussions or discipline with members of their staff or correcting stuff or training stuff, or or, you you know, um,
Or using bad.
Understood.
Or or talking about, um, struggles they're having, or, you know, all all those kind of things, those aren't publicly recorded things, because they're administrative functions that a police department's doing. And what I'm saying is, is that there, there's a process that doesn't usually involve city council, it's an administrative process.
And that, and that shouldn't be recorded, I agree with you.
Right, in the interest of trying to do something different, in the interest of trying to lead out and trying to represent the public's interest in that administrative process, we're involving members of the council. It's still an administrative process, it's still the administrative side of what's going on. And then there's another part where we in our formal city council roles as a body will deliberate these things, and then we'll take those deliberations into the public square, and the public will have an opportunity to come and give feedback to us on our deliberations and what they're seeing. There's not any aspect of this that is anything less than totally public.
Steve, I.
And totally transparent, and and I I don't, I I feel like I'm trying to defend something that I don't need to defend, but this is is, this is better than anybody has ever done it.
Steve, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in, um, I think, I I appreciate that sentiment, I appreciate that feeling, um, I don't believe that, uh, I don't believe that was.
I don't believe that was the intent by Councilmore at all, I also understand that sentiment because I. I feel in some ways the same way as you do. Uh, I appreciate that you articulated that because I think it's helpful to have it articulated, because um it helps us. Continue to be open and honest with each other and have those public conversations, so thank you for bringing that up, I really, as well with with Councilmore. Thank you for bringing what your concerns, because I think that it is healthy for us to have that conversation. And to get it out there and make sure that everybody's on the record and has that opportunity to make sure that the residents know how they feel and those. I think at this point, we've all been pretty clear, I appreciate this discussion and, um. I'm I'm, at this point, I assume that there's no further productive questions.
Just have one thing on the M D A.
Okay, awesome.
And if the comment's been made here and like some of the public or social forums, wherever. That we needed inheritance, we have control over it, right, that was the thing when I first got involved with the S L R property and everything else. That one, that one's tough for me with these M D As, right, as you guys have have clearly stated. They're not gonna come in unless they have these things tied down, right? So when it comes in, we don't have any control at that point, the M D A is the control we have, right, this is the negotiation is where we can. Have a voice, we're at the table and can, but once that M D A is signed. Like that then it's done, like the public needs to understand.
That's a fair point.
That that the control is over at that point, it's in the document, and if we screwed up, just like we have found out with all these others that people blame me for, that people decided fifteen years ago and I didn't live here. That document was agreed to and signed and there's not a damn thing we can do about it. So we only have as much control as this process gives us and as much as we can think ahead and nail everything down, quite frankly, they're better at it. Right, I mean, that's what they do, right, and so it, we have to do a complete job, so. I I appreciate this discussion tonight because I think now I have a better idea of what this really is, that we are negotiating and and we're communicating. That negotiation to the public, rather than doing an analysis and then. Cause that that was my assumption, the first meeting, so that that's better to be clear about that for sure, but this control thing, the M D A is it. Right, I mean, once that's one, and that's when that that's what we work all that out, we nail that all down before they come in. I don't think the public really understands that part, they think that once it's here, then we can affect things, then we have our community meetings when they build, when they build this phase or that phase and we can change things.
I think that's really important.
Nope, it like it by then, it's way, way, way too late, that.
That's, I I think you make an extremely valid point, and that's where I think we've relied, we're relying heavily on. Our communications team to ensure that that process is. That we've talked about a couple of times, that we're having town halls, that we're doing all those things, because you guys are absolutely right, this is the time we have to affect it.
Do you think it's good bring community facilitators into that most discussions, maybe think as a, maybe think the aspect of the community.
I do.
I I truly believe there should be an aspect of the community that could be community side is.
And 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 maybe, I know I requested this the last meeting and they're probably just not quite ready with it yet, but I requested that we get a communication plan from staff.
We have one, we have it.
We said I'll have one.
Did I just miss it?
I guess.
Yeah, Tammy sent it out, it's like seven pages long, it's really.
I apologize, I completely missed that.
That's probably why I didn't see it, it was too big and I stopped looking.
So that that I will, I will own that, I apologize, I missed that particular one, so I'm gonna go back and look at that, but that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back and look at that.
Me too.
And focus on that in regards to making sure that we don't have any concerns about that, so that we are bringing in those groups that we that we have.
I I think right now, what we're discussing in these meetings is still preliminary.
Yeah, yeah.
Then it's not time for that yet, but I uh totally agree that as we go down the rabbit hole.
Right. Who do you think should be, I guess it's my biggest question, should we, would that be the community facilitator's meeting or not, or do we form a different community? I I just, I was just curious what everyone thought about who, how we invite people to be participating.
We'll do the open houses, we'll have houses.
Yeah, we'll do the open houses, and we're planning on taking this to the community facilitator groups for sure.
Just more to.
You know, talk with each of them about it and go through them, you know, with it and see what they think and get their thoughts and. And gather input from them, so we want to take it to each of their community groups individually. Um, to gather input, because I don't think you're gonna get the same responses from each of those areas, but we have to consider all areas, not just one or two areas, and so.
No, each area, I agree.
Yeah.
Agree.
Right, and and so that's where I'm gonna rely on staff, uh, in my opinion, is is where we should rely on staff, cause that is their expertise, that's what they can do.
Oh, I agree, that's why I thought we could get it.
And 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 I I think the community facilitator group was, this is the exact kind of stuff it was created for, and so.
And.
I I I still continue to give credit to uh uh Nicole for for bringing this to our city, cause it has been a fantastic.
If if I should make one suggestion. Uh, there are. Landmarks that are gonna be passed along this process, right, there's certain dates where certain things are gonna happen and certain information is gonna be presented. Is there a way for us to use that? Potential outline of things to outline dates where we would have some of these meetings, so we can say. If on, you know, July twenty second or whatever, this is gonna happen, then in somewhere in the next ten days, two weeks after that. There would be some kinds of meetings to communicate that, and and I don't even know, I I have the calendar, but I I can't recall it in my head of what. The significant landmark dates would be. But at least, cause I think, you know, Sherry wants to know, I think it's important, you could probably start. Communicating some of that out to the public that as these events happen, here is the communication intent and plan. To get information out and to get feedback from the residents.
So I think that sounds like some actual direction that we are giving to staff, which uh to me is a positive end to a long discussion that we've had. So unless there's any further requests for direction, I'm going to move us on to our last item. Uh, which would be five point one, if council has questions.
I just have one more to comment.
No.
I I already moved on, I already moved on, too bad.
I just know, I didn't want it to compare this to importance of the police and where the police are, I didn't mean to.
I thought you were gonna ask questions on that.
Sorry.
I just want you to be clear, I I completely respect what you're doing, I was just trying to just make some.
I don't think anybody thought anything other than that, um, any any items are, do we need to discuss five point one, are we good to move on?
Yeah, okay, okay, just wanted to make you know.
Good move on, fantastic, I will accept a motion to uh move into closed session.
I'll make a motion to tamper the recessed city council meeting convening a closed session for the purposes of the steps to carry to professional competence and physical awareness and health of the individual and purpose to save or lease real property as provided by interest and entity to fifty that's four dollars to the five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Jared, go ahead, yes, Cherry.
Yeah. I've never made that motion.
Steve, I hope the answer motion passes, we appreciate those in attendance in the audience, we will be kicking everybody out, so thank you very much, please go home, we will.